...the face of this community. And with that comes accountability. And quite frankly, I believe that accountability is something that's been lacking. So if it is indeed the right person, I am strongly in favor of the mayor, the strong mayor system.
Okay. Are you sure you'll answer the next one first? Do you support the extra fee to pay for street repairs?
Um, yes, I do. Um, you know, our streets are such in bad condition, um, we have to put some, there has to be a maintenance program first and foremost. We have to maintain our streets in order to keep them in proper condition. Um, it's time to make sure that we have a maintenance program in place so that we don't have to replace or repair. Um, if a bridge was to crumble on Forty Street, it would take millions of dollars to fix that bridge. When we can put together plans to maintenance them and keep the maintenance current.
Woo! Joe?
Uh, that is a good question. We're talking about taxes again. We're talking about the people in this community. We're talking about people that are retired, and we're talking about being retirees in here. That's gonna be pretty tough when you start taxing. And there's a number of initiatives that we're calling, that we're calling for taxes here. And subsequently, no, I'm not in favor of that. I think we can take some of that money from Petco. Folks, they have approximately $60 million, okay? We need to, again, I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, they have a budget. But we need to take some of that money that's already sitting there, and we need to use that money to build the infrastructure and to create a community that is safe and sound. It's there. I've been told, Joe, by people that have worked there, that have thousands of budget that they count.
It's blatantly obvious that Pueblo is in a dire need of resurfacing of our main
thoroughways for a number of reasons. Not just the fact that it's expensive to pay for tires and alignment and auto upkeep, but also it creates awareness that we care about our community to others. Nice streets elevate our status as a whole, period. I don't currently sit on city council. I don't know what it's like to go through the budget and try to find money for all the different, all the different entities and things that need to be funded. I do believe that it's incumbent upon the city council to provide basic services such as roads. So I would prefer that there wouldn't be a tax, but it seems as though in this particular situation, residential fees will be very minimal, a dollar a household is what I understand. And so for that reason, I am in support of the roads.
Cheryl?
Do I support increasing more taxes to fix the roads? No, I don't. Because I was actually circulating a petition with Ted Freeman to use the existing one-half cent rate, sales tax. I'm very disappointed that the city has been neglecting them for so long. I'm currently seeing street repair on the east side, and I'm hoping that's not the final product. But I do not support any more taxes at this time.
I do not support that tax. And let me tell you why. Every year, the city gets four and a half million dollars from the Highway Users Transportation Fund. That money gives your taxes from road and bridges, and it's given back to the city. They put 2.4 million dollars back into the budget against personnel expenses. The budget alone in 2017, revenue was underestimated by $6 million, and expenses were overestimated by over $3 million. Nine million dollars sitting there that has not been appropriated by the current city council towards one policeman or one piece of tar to go on a road. That is inconscionable. They knew that we were gonna have a windfall this year, and they refused to take that money and put it to where it's intended. It will be my mission to get consensus once again on city council that essential services, essential services of road paving come out of the general budget, the general fund which is paid for by our tax dollars already. The money is there. You don't need a tax.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm all, I'm all for road repairs. I'm all for more police. But at what point do we stop putting it on the backs of the taxpayer? I think as a city, I think we need to become, we need to streamline the process of creating new business in this town. And with that, we can broaden the tax base, and create funds to pay for roads, to pay for police. We need to stop putting it on the backs of the, of all of us in this room.
Yes, I'm the only one on this diet here tonight that has actually passed an initiative. I'm the co-chair of the Tabor Timeout for the county, which built the health department building, repaired a lot of our recreational facilities, and also included over $7 billion for the repair of roads. So there's other ways that we can approach, you know, the repair of our streets. I'm not here to defend the city council back during the recession, but that fund had to be utilized to pay our police officers and other people. The city was no different than what happened to all of us during the recession. So there were reasons why that money was allocated back eight years ago in that fashion. I am in favor of the, the, the street utility at this point, but if I get elected to city council, we're also going to see a budget line item that will be there continually so that we can repair our streets in the future and not, and not find ourselves in some really dire straits with really broken streets. Thank you.
Joey, you'll handle this question first. Do you support either of the ballot measures to increase sales taxes to pay for more police officers? And if so, which of the two proposals do you support?
I support 2A. And I'll tell you why I support 2A. I'm probably the only one here. I know I'm the only one here. I did a ride-along with the police department about three weeks ago. I did a 10-hour shift with them. A 10-hour shift, two overlapping shifts, and saw a lot of things that would just blow your mind. We have so many police officers on the street, and in one incident, one-third of those police officers were tied up with one particular situation. One particular situation. We did in this wing shift, we went from one side of town to the other, where we saw, and I'm gonna say this, this is crude, but it's the truth, we saw hookers on one side of town with the pimps. That's what's going on here, folks. We need to wake up, we need to realize, we need police on the street, we need safety on us, subspace is in the quadrants of the city. It's time to take our city back. We need people to be able to walk out at night and see, and be able to walk back in their house and believe that they live in the rural Colorado, not in a hellhole.
Teresa?
Yes, thank you, Steve. I believe that we should do everything we can to adequately fund and equip our police force here in Pueblo. I believe that a strong police presence will deter crime, make people feel safer, as Mr. Latino was alluding to. And I think that's important, not only for current residents, but also for people who come from out of town. Although oftentimes, I hear massively great things from people who visit us from other communities. As far as this ballot initiative, I am gonna vote for it because I think that the value that we're gonna get out of hiring these police officers now is going to outweigh the cost of pushing it down the road and not having a full police force for a number of years if this doesn't get passed. For, if you entrust me with your votes and I get elected to city council, we'll sit down, get very close, and look at the budget, and see if we can come up with some funds to hire some new police officers. Thank you.
Cheryl?
I like, because that's one thing that I do agree with taxing, just because the community needs it. It's a necessity at this time, just so that way the police officers can respond to 911 calls in a timely manner. So I do support increasing tax for that one particular issue.
I do not support those tax increases. Let me put this as simply as possible so I can understand it. The city has in excess of $6 million that's flaying around this year. They put $3 million back into capital fund project, and $1.9 million back into a future wastewater project. There's $9 million. You don't need a tax. You can take it out of the budget. 25 new patrol officers is 2.5 million dollars. The roads money is 2.4 million dollars. That's 4.9 million dollars. And we'll have money left over. We've been sold a bill of goods. There is no need for this tax. The money is there. I challenge city council, and when I'm elected to city council, it will be my mission to do the budget process as a year-long process, not a one-month process, and I will find that money and I will make, put it to use. Never ask for a ballot initiative for these taxes.
Dennis?
I am in favor. We've got some great police officers in this town, but at the end of the day, they need help. Here in Pueblo, people just want a good-paying job, and they wanna feel safe. More police officers would definitely help that. And as I said earlier, attracting new business, if we can make this a safer community, you know, it's obviously more encouraging to people wanting to be creating business here and bringing business into this town.
Dennis?
This is a no-brainer, I think, for the addition of these additional officers is a great, is a great deal for the community. Every survey that you do within our city, the citizens indicate that that is one of their top priorities. It's such a small amount for huge dividends that it will pay. And I, it's also a safety issue. I think we need to get our police force up to the right level. You know, we do not want to endanger our police officers by putting them in situations that we lack manpower. And along with that, I think that we start, we need to start looking at technology and giving police officers the resources that they need. So yes, I am in favor of this small tax.
Ayesha?
I do support it as well. I believe, like I said in my opening statement, we have to have a safe community. We have to keep our police officers safe. It is important. They are overworked, understaffed. Listen to the police scanner at night, and listen to how many calls that are going out there, and listen to some of the response times. Some are eight hours, some are six hours, some are 12 hours. We really have to focus on public safety as a whole. It is important that we have police officers to protect our city.
Okay, Jason, you'll handle this one first.
Steve? Excuse me, not to interrupt, but I need to add something. If I might.
Joe, I don't think that's fair to the other candidates.
Okay, all right.
You can do the closing remarks however.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Jason? What will you do to deal with the growing number of homeless people and pantenders in Pueblo?
Thank you for that question, Steve. That's an important one. Our geographical location does make it very attractive for homeless and transients to come through to our beautiful community. Unfortunately, I see it often in my neighborhood. I do see what appears to be transients walking about. The street across from me, they actually let themselves in. There were squatters, and then the property ended up getting burnt, if there was a structural fire on it. So there is a very real need. If elected to city council, I would like to put together a task force or committee to look at the opportunities of implementing a worker program for these individuals. I think that we need to reevaluate some of the criteria, not, I'm sorry, we should encourage nonprofits to reevaluate the criteria of how, who they're helping. But at the very least, I do believe that our community should have a homeless shelter, especially for homeless families. So, thank you.
Charlotte?
Yes, I'm actually out there working with them right now. I'm asking them, what do they think they need to, you know, be able to live a happy and successful life? I'm noticing that while I'm out there, there's ones that are, that want to help, and there's ones that don't. I would like to, first of all, provide a shelter for all of them, because at this time, I don't think we have any shelters available. I would like to also create, like Jason said, a program that has a job placement and home placement program for them. I would like to see maybe also possible education opportunities for them as well. But yes, homelessness is one of my top priorities, and those individuals know it themselves.
Bottom line is, is that city council and city government is a social services agency.
So while we need to support the nonprofits that help out homelessness and things like that, I don't think that the city can do anything other than hire the patrolmen that's necessary to enforce our laws. Our laws of lawyering, sleeping on public property, sleeping on private property, we need to be able to address that. The hard fact is, is that Pueblo needs to become a community that doesn't accept that kind of behavior, you know, fits. If that's the image that we wanna have, then that's the line of support.
Right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here to listen to the candidates do what they have to say. So let's allow them to do that, please. Kevin?
Obviously, I would agree that it is an issue here. While I don't have the perfect answer, I do know that we certainly can't turn our back on the homeless. I also do think that there's something to be said for a fresh pair of eyes on the issue. Again, can't turn our back on them, and if I'm elected, I'd like to think that we could come up with some sort of solution for the homeless.
Yes. You know, the homeless issue is really not just Pueblo issue, it's a national issue. And it really revolves around so many issues, whether it's homeless veterans, whether it's people with mental health issues. So the problem has to be solved comprehensively. And ironically, I just made an appointment today to meet with the people that will be renovating the Wayward Cross Mission. And I believe that people like that, and Stottlemann with Posada, we need to get together with these people and come up with some viable solutions in trying to deal with this issue on many fronts. I think a lot of times, we have all these fragmented departments and nonprofits that do their own little thing, but leave all these gaps. And I believe that we, we have an obligation as a society, you know, to be empathetic toward people that find themselves in that, that position. And I think the city council does have a role. We can support the nonprofits that are doing a good job in the community.
Ayesha?
Well, being in the cannabis industry, we get blamed for the homeless problem all the time. I wanna make it clear that there is no correlation from homelessness to cannabis. Denver did asleep a few years ago, moved them all to Colorado Springs. Colorado Springs didn't sleep, and they all came to Pueblo. We have a wonderful, warm city. I also believe that our community has too many handouts. We're handing out to the homeless too much, and the homeless people talk. They know where to go, and they know where, where areas to go to, they know what organizations to go to to get those handouts. I also agree that there are people who need help and want help, but there are also those people who prefer to be homeless. And we just need our police officers, and that goes along with public safety once again, to make sure that these homeless people are held accountable for breaking lottery laws.
I spent some time the other day with a lady by the name of Rosemary, who's the assistant to Father Tomas of Holy Family. And she said to me, she said, "Joe, Posada has no more money. Catholic Charities has no more money, so they're coming here now. They know where to come, they know, they know where to go." As an example, a mother, a father, two children, their grandmother showed up in the car saying, "We can't get any help. We don't, we don't have any food. We have no place to stay." So the two ladies that are making minimum wage got them a place to stay, okay? Folks, we need to realize, we talk about marijuana, we talk about drugs, it gets rampant, all right? We need to be, we need to be focused on those kinds of things in this community. The state of Arizona is an example. The state of Arizona, former governor of Colorado, the Republican, Bill Owens, and the former mayor of Denver, Wellington Webb, were both on TV on every single station there a year, a year ago, okay? And their, their message was, "No, no, 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 no." This is what it brought us, okay? Wellington Webb standing down on, on the river at Cherry Creek, was staying, staying with a news reporter, "Oh, by the way, oh, by the way, I have two sons that are lawyers, and one lives on the street." Come on, folks, let's get back to reality here. It's a problem, and we need to deal with it. And how do you deal with it? That's the question. Do I have an answer? No, but I'd be willing to work to find that answer.
We're down for our final question. Charlotte, you'll handle it first. Do you think the city should establish mandatory trash collection? And how can the city reduce or eliminate illegal dumping?
That's something that I've been thinking about. I would like to see recycling. But I'm kind of on the fence with that, just because I know people that are in that industry, and I would hate to take local business owners out of business with that. So honestly, that's something that I would probably leave up to my voters. Thank you.
Mar?
I do not support that. I will say that I believe in the rights of free enterprise, and the public policy should encourage a vibrant economy. That doesn't happen when you make things mandatory, and the government steps in and tells you you must do this, and you mustn't do that. As far as the trash problem goes, I saw, we have a very interesting opportunity ahead of us. In the process where city council is gonna look at getting rid of Black Hills Energy, starting maybe a municipal electric company, maybe we look at trash incinerators, where we pick up that trash, we burn it for electricity, and we may even pay the people to bring us their trash. You never know. An alternative that we need to look at, and if I'm on city council, it's ideas and visions like that that I'm gonna look at, and I wanna make sure that everybody has, has to say something.
Kevin?
Sure and sweet. I'm not in favor of it being mandatory. Quite frankly, I think we've got bigger pitch to pride.
Dennis?
This thing needs to be studied, and the reason it does, and I've done a lot of research on this, we do not want to land up with a monopoly of, you know, waste management or waste connection. My whole approach to mandatory trash is to get all of the small business people that are in the trash business together, and I think we can come up with a solution. What I don't wanna see is all of the local businesses that are in the trash business get hurt and be driven out of business by having a mandatory trash system, which only the big guys get to play. So fundamentally, and I've talked to several small businesses that are in the trash business, and they're all for getting together, as long as the allocation of the additional, you know, services to families in the community are equally distributed, I think we can, we can come up with a solution. There's many things that are mandatory in our society, and, you know, mandating trash service is very important for the public safety and the public health of the community.
Ayesha?
Well, this is a touchy subject, 'cause, you know, we also want our city to stay clean and, and our community to be clean and free of trash and debris. I am in the process of researching this a little bit in depth, so at this point, I'm not gonna make any comments on it at this point.
Joe?
I agree with Dennis. We have a pretty functional organization that's working pretty appropriately right now, or working well, I believe. Why would we wanna take the small business person out of business by having a conglomerate? I don't believe in that. This is called free enterprise, that's what this society is about. I think we can work with them, if we can get them all together, and we can have a team. It's called teamwork. That's where I am at.
Okay. Jason?
Thank you. Well, I also am in support of free enterprise. I also see a huge issue in regards to trash, not just litter, but large items, couches, tires, things of that nature. I have a friend in Yale, he lives over in Aberdeen, and people are always constantly dumping study papers in his back alley, and it just causes a huge problem, so there is absolutely a need for it. I would be open to discussing it as a council member. I think we could work with the small business owners who collect trash services to potentially partner up and maybe have some city drop-off centers for people with the large items, that we could work that out. But more importantly, I believe in recycling. I was endorsed by the Sierra Club, proudly thank you. I think that recycling, there's a huge opportunity there that we can capture. We can build a center, perhaps we can get Petco involved to recycle things and send that money, get money in from that. And that's the short answer. Thank you.
We'll now have closing remarks from each one of the candidates in three minutes to wrap things up. And we're gonna go to the reverse order that we began with, so Charlotte, you'll begin.
So I wanted to be last. So I just want everybody to know that, again, I am not a politician, I am a proud public servant. The reason why I'm successful is not because I'm smart, but because I've never quit. So I want you guys to know that I've been doing it for 15 years. I'm the one that's out there. The number one thing is for us to all be registered to vote. And I'm the one that's out there ensuring that we're all being involved. That's the hard, one of the hardest jobs in this city. So I want you guys to know that I plan on, I'm a protector, I'm a fighter, I'm a go-getter. I'm happily divorced, and I dedicate the rest of my life to making the difference. I'm out there praying with the community, with their, in their churches. I have a Pueblo prayer circle at the Busmer Park. I'm car accidents and other incidents. I also am working with everybody in the community that nobody else wants to. I'm also attending the city council meetings. And right now, in, in response to the transit, I'm actually working with the police department right now, trying to get them outside of the storefronts. I'm trying to let them know that the elderly people don't feel safe, and that I don't want the younger kids seeing that. I'm asking them to please hold on and please be patient, that I am trying to do whatever I can for them. And again, they do it the way I talk to them, because they see me out here, they listen to me. And so they're, they're, they're on board with it. Same thing with the gang members, and all the other people that are, that are, that are causing troubles and stuff like that in the community, those are the ones that I can talk to. And I just wanna be able to enlighten them and encourage them to be better. The change is here, and the time is now. And please vote Charlotte Perez. Thank you.
Jason?
Thank you, Steve. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my vision for Pueblo. Thanks again to the audience members here, everyone watching at home, and especially thank you to my fellow candidates here. I'm honored to have so many quality individuals who wanna take the bull by the horns and do what they can to improve Pueblo. Folks, I hope to agree with your vote, because for one, I want to be proactive and not reactive. I'm ready, because we need new leadership in Pueblo to bring about positive outcomes. Looking at the future, I see a vision of a Pueblo renaissance that ushers in a new chapter for economic growth and community empowerment. Let's convert Pueblo into 100% Wi-Fi zone. Let's attain 100% renewable energy. Let's utilize empty buildings as community centers. Let's transform Towers 5 and 6 into a battery storage for solar energy. Let's support our police and fire departments, making sure they have what they need to serve us best. Let's improve or create conditions that support local businesses. Let's embrace industries like technology and green energy jobs to bring new life into the city. Let's be an effective and efficient government body that serves the needs of the public. Elections matter. Do you want to seek progress, or do you want more of the same? A vote for me is a vote for a better future for Pueblo. I'm I'm...